Okay, let's, uh, let's call this Andover City Council meeting to order March 13th, 2018. We'll start off with roll call to my left. Caroline.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Troy Tabor, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warrington, council member.
Buck Buchanan, captain with Andover Police Department.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Mike Roosevelt, deputy fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of public works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Datter, city administrator.
All right, item three this evening is the invocation. I don't believe I see any one of our chaplains here this evening. Okay, Troy, would you be so kind?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, bow your heads please, if you will. Do you have a God? Thank you for allowing us to get together tonight again to talk about the city and things that are going on in the city and be in our hearts and our minds tonight as we make decisions that impact everyone that are here and in our community. And please be with those that are here to help them to be able to listen and hear and be a part of this conversation as it always helps everyone in that way. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Will you stand with us for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? There being none, we'll move on to the acceptance of the agenda. Am I correct in saying there's no additional agenda items tonight other than what's in our packet?
Yes, sir.
Somebody be so kind as to accept the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
I'm wish by Greg, second by Caroline, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, we have a citizen request this evening. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott Pulley. Thank you for the time this evening. Requested to have a block party for my wife's 40th anniversary party. I've talked with all the neighbors, got their approvals. I'm gonna have a live band, food, that type of stuff. You can see on the map up there where things will be located. We've already talked with Mike and Susan, got all the information. Street will be left available for emergency access, that type of stuff. So, I think we've got everything squared away. Just hoping we can get approval to do so. It'll be from the 5 to 9 in the evening, so music will stop and plenty of time to be quiet by 10 o'clock.
I just don't know how we can approve this. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the request as presented.
I'll second it. All right, motion by C.R., second by Mike, to approve the street closure on North Quail Crossing on April 28, 2018, from 5 to 9 p.m. as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have fun.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good luck.
Just trying to give you a hard time.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Item number eight. We have a couple awards here from the fire department.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to recognize a couple of our fire staff, your fire staff, for the exceptional job that they've done over the last year. In each year, the membership of the fire department, by peer review, selects a member of the department that they feel has done an exemplary job of doing not just the job of being a firefighter, but doing the job of being a good citizen. And it's my pleasure today, excuse me, it's my pleasure this evening, to be able to acknowledge these two firefighters for their great work. And if I could have new lieutenant Stephen Cullenane join me here, as well as firefighter L.J. Geist. So Stephen Cullenane was selected by his peers, recommended by his peers, to receive the Chief Walt Eisenhower Firefighter of the Year Award for Andover Fire and Rescue for all of the tremendous activities and focus on training that he provides to our department and for that and many, many, many other things. Stephen, good on ya. Thank you very much for your service to our city. And then, secondary award that, and it's not secondary by any means, other than it chronologically comes second, is the Chief's Award for Living the Big Four. And the Big Four to us is our mantra, the way that we treat other people. And it's do your job, treat other people right, have all-in attitude and all-out effort, not just in going to a fire, but in everything you should do, that you do every day that you do it, whether you're doing it for the fire department and the citizens of this great city, or your fellow brothers and sisters on the floor around the house, or your family. And firefighter L.J. Geist, new to us, we stole him from the city of El Dorado, and we are so happy to have him. He has just been exemplary in every sense of the word. We look for great things. L.J. just completed going through the Peer Fitness, I'm gonna mess up the title, Peer Fitness Trainer credentialing process out of state, one of four of our firefighters that has taken on that challenge to help make sure that myself and all of the other firefighters stay well and healthy to be able to serve all of your citizens. So, L.J., thank you so much for your good work this past year and congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor and council, thank you.
We will move on to item number nine. We have a couple presentations this evening. First up is the R.D. Red Bud Trail presentation, little status report.
How are y'all this evening?
Good.
My name is Byron Rupp. I am 617 West Slade Street. I'm president of R.D. because everybody else said not at first. So, it's our pleasure to be here tonight, and actually, I've got something to share with y'all. Buck, would you help me out, man? More up-to-date pictures, but, let's see here. Several years ago, for those of you who've been around, we had a bit of a trail issue in that there was no trail. It was more like a forest. And there were some canyons. I guess that would be Butler County's version of the Grand Canyon. There were, the Red Bud Trail had washed out or been dug out in a number of places. So we've had a whole bunch of volunteers, in fact, over 50 this year, help us out with more than 20 meetings and workdays over the course of the year. We do have some fun. We dance with the bushes, sometimes intentionally, sometimes not. And we've seen a lot of progress. Andover has been gracious enough to give us a grant for the last few years to help us clean that up. And so, we started off by just the stuff we had to cut back so that the emergency vehicles would be able to get down the trail. We were bringing to the recycling area here in town, but that got to be a bit much. And as I mentioned, we've, we've had help from all ages with more than 50 volunteers. It's just in 2017.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. We'll have more this year, though. The grant we received, because it was taking so long to use our farm truck, drag it from, drag the debris to the dump and back, what we decided to do was rent chippers, which the grant paid for, so that we could go through the process quicker and be environmentally friendly. So, just as a quick update, grading began last month. We've had some progress. You can actually see a tire tracks in the, in the path. There's a trough that's been laid for the limestone. The limestone's going down, and it's starting to look like this. And those pictures that I shared with y'all were actually from this morning. So just to give you sort of a quick timeline, I know a few of you are new to the group. We've trimmed and cleared the growth. We've graded the rail bed. The limestone's going down. We've got about a 1.7 miles that still needs to have the first layer of limestone put down. We've got another couple miles that are getting the second layer. The cattle guards, gates at Metalark and Central, posts. There's still work to be done, but we just wanted to say thank you for all of the city's help and support as we've been moving forward with this. There you go. Questions?
Mr. Mayor. Byron, I would just like to say that I have, we have a new appointment this year. We haven't done this before, but I'm officially the liaison for your group, so.
Standing.
Over the past few years, anytime anyone wanted to talk to me, I've always been available to your group, and I've been a big proponent. But, just wanted to officially tell you, if there's something you specifically would like from me, then don't hesitate to contact me.
Oh, you're gonna regret that. Thank you very much, Caroline. We really appreciate your help. Anybody else?
Good stuff.
We think so, and we hope you'll be out there. Just the last part of this is, we're hoping to coordinate with the city and have a trail opening, having it all the way out to Kellogg and back, ready to go by May, which is Bike Month.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's a good bet.
This picture, I believe this is something you alluded to the other day with the barbed wire fence across the.
Yeah, that's the gate.
Okay, that's the gate. Somebody like to elaborate on what the gate is for? Not yet, Buck, almost.
It's Central. Sorry. Steve Anderson, city engineer, the, the gate explanation is pretty simple. We have a unique section there that triggers a state law requiring we build right-of-way fence along the trail. Apparently, it was removed or never existed. And so, we've made arrangements and with your 500-page packets, I'm sure you don't remember, but we do have a contract with a fence builder and a surveyor, and they'll start soon building that fence. But the gates have to stay in place to protect the livestock and people from them. And when the fence is done, we'll take those gates out.
Perfect. That's at, what, what location is this at?
Metalark and Central.
Central and Metalark, okay.
Yeah, when I saw it, it didn't look like we put it up. I thought maybe somebody had just decided to commandeer a portion.
That's your city park crews at work.
All right, item 9.2. Buck, you are now.
Make sure I'm using the right one here. Mayor, council, thank you for letting me come here tonight. The chief had asked me to come and speak to everyone about my experience through the National, FBI National Academy. He, when we were talking about this, he said you got about an hour to give your presentation, so. I am just kidding, because the chief said keep it nice and sweet and short, to the point. But, there's quite a few slides. I'm gonna try to go through a little quick, but I wanted everyone to experience and see the totality of this training. It's, there's a lot of parts to it, but yeah, it was very exciting, as well as educational. There's so much to it that, I've gotta give another presentation on Thursday where I have actually an hour to do this, so I'm trying to combine them together a little bit and kinda test it a little further. As you can see, I started October the 1st, I don't have the date on there. And normally, the chief will say it's a 10-week class. It's actually a 11-week for me, because they, we had a couple of days off for Thanksgiving. The class is paid for primarily by the FBI. They, the training, transportation, everything, the expense of the city is very minor. It's just my salary as well as a couple of shirts. And you'll see on here in just a second, the uniforms. It's hard to see in that picture because it's bright, but it's a kind of an ugly green shirt we had to wear every day. So, when we were in class, you had to wear khakis, uniformative. There were 225 people that started the class with me, which included more than 20 countries from around the world. What was neat about that is, is, or not neat, we actually lost about three people, one from a physical accident he had the first week, which that person will be able to come back. We had someone join us that had a heart attack a few years before that. While he was on the track, he had a heart attack, and thank goodness they were able to bring him back. And we had another guy that his wife missed him, so he decided to go home, back to her, which, oh, I wouldn't want to go back home after that. As you can tell on the campus, it's a massive facility, huge. I did lose weight, a lot of weight just from the walking. You had to walk the whole entire thing every day, going to the track or any other place. But it's just a beautiful campus as well. Some of the classes I took through this, my favorite class is forensics. This is one of my instructors here, Buddy McGinnis, who was an agent for many years, and now he's an instructor, one of the lead instructors for the FBI in forensics. I loved it. It was really good, because it let me learn a lot of the resources that we have available to us. So, a lot of that is, I can call Buddy anytime I want to, or any other instructor, saying, hey, I have a problem. I need a code breaker. And we went through a class on that one day, and that resource is there for us. It's just the drop of a call. That's all it takes, is something like that. There was just many other things that they showed us as well. One of my favorite classes, though, that he taught, and here's the lab they had, the actual FBI lab, only the people that went through his class were able to go to the lab. There was a total of 50 people that were able to take that class out of the 220-plus that we had. We did a lot of research in his class. We did a lot of, and I couldn't show it, unfortunately, but it kinda neat to do that. We went over the O.J. Simpson trial. We went over the Unabomber. So I do have a thing in there about the Unabomber. We went over John B. N. Ramsey. So, I mean, we went through deep details. And the important part of that was to see blood splatter, just different ways on how we can investigate crimes and what we're looking for. So they taught us a lot of things in forensics and how we handle those, and also a resource. If we have a missing person, that's why the FBI was here recently in Wichita to help with the missing child that they're looking for. They are here for us, and we have a team that we can contact. Again, it's just a phone call away. Some other classes that I had to go through, it was leadership classes. Here's a couple examples where we had to, usually it's about a two-hour seminar that you go through. And then later on, you had to go back to get a grade through this. So I get credits, 17 total credit hours from the University of Virginia because of these classes. But part of that is you had to go online and have to write papers, and there was a lot of work to it, late nights as well doing that. Human Resources was my second favorite. I should say, public classes that I did. It was very interesting, because there's a lot of laws that I learned, things that we now are going to have to do with an employee that's getting ready to have a baby. That was in a federal law that changed about 12 years ago. Now we know that we have to have a room, especially for her, for certain reasons and stuff. So, by those laws, it was neat to go through that, and I learned ahead of time. So when I came back here, I told the chief, we're doing this already. We'd already planned it, but now we're mandated. So, it was neat to see that we're already ahead of the game. General Flynn, leadership classes. There was a lot of those things we had to go through, again, to sit through on leadership and how we are, be leaders and, you know, for our future folks as well. Ferguson was a great class that we went through. The chief here came in and talked about lessons learned, how Ferguson lost the narrative. So we have to be on top of our game. We have to make sure we get our message out there and not let the media take charge of that and do it themselves. The Boston bombing, this is actually the boat that's at the FBI headquarters, so we toured that. You can barely see little bitty spots in the back and on the side. Those were actually bullet shots, holes. On the other side, there's even more. It's a miracle this person did not die with many rounds that went through that boat. Other things we had to do is Saddam Hussein. There's a gentleman up there that's next to the picture of Saddam. He was interrogator for Saddam. It took him 10 months to do his interview, but we learned also how we did things. So it helps, again, things were, that could help us on how we can do our job and how we can do interviews and stuff. It was kinda neat. And that's the actual cabin for the Unabomber that they have at the News Museum, is what they call it in DC. This was a, picture at the bottom was on a, the Amish school shooting in Pennsylvania. So we had a lot of these things that we'd have guest speakers come in and kinda show us and tell us what we had to go through and what they saw. Up here are the countries that were represented from around the world that were in our class. And then what we would do is, we would go in and have to kinda do a presentation or have to do questions to those countries. What are the problems they face? And same thing, they would ask us problems. So we got to really understand that there's a lot of similarities between our countries compared to what we actually thought. And they get that same experiences as well. What's really important with international students is, and especially for the FBI, a lot of times, and just happened this last year, they had a country, and they didn't say which country it was. They didn't have anybody to ever go through this academy. Well, they had a major national, international incident, and now they had a contact at that point, were able to call them directly and be able to help with that. We had that happen with us quite a few years ago when Captain Phillips was here. He was in the FBI Academy or NA Academy with a gentleman from, I wanna say it was Houston PD, and we had a runaway, somebody came from Washington and abducted a child we had here. He picked up the phone, called down there, and the guy is now the assistant chief of Houston, and had a task force, two units that went and were able to find her. She turned on her phone for just a brief second, and that's how we located her. So that relationship is the key to the whole thing, and it was because of this academy. The hard part, one of the hardest part, but the one I enjoyed more than anything, was the physical side of stuff, our physical training, 5K runs, and the Yellow Brick Road. I never really understood what the Yellow Brick Road was, and you see it in the chief's office all the time until I had to run it. So it gave me a different perspective and appreciation after what I saw that he's gone through on this. I had amazing instructors, you can see here, Steve. He's a doctor that was in the Air Force, and now he's an FBI instructor. And he broke it down to the science of the physical education. Other instructors didn't like the classroom part of it, you know, get out there and run and do whatever. And he broke it down and helped us understand why we should do certain workouts. Few pictures of our actual workouts that we do, these were, I had PT at least three to four times a week, sometimes three to four hours a day, and then outside of that as well. So it wasn't just there. So you wanted to make sure you were on top and ready for the final run that we had to do. Again, some more training here. Didn't matter if it was raining, snowing, hadn't, didn't matter whatsoever. You're out there. Very bottom picture is, we're running. It was in the rain. They didn't really care. You're gonna run, which I'm glad they did, because we needed it. We ran hills. Virginia's very hilly location, so you did a lot of running on those, as well as the garage. So the parking garage, you'd run every step you had on those. That's about once a week or so. And then 5Ks. Most people know me, I hate running. I'm not a runner, despise running, love riding a bike. But I ended up doing my first official 5K down in DC itself, so that was kinda neat, take part of that. Then I ended up doing two more, and then the final one was the Yellow Brick Road, which is, you'll see here, is the Marines' Agility Course, 6.2 miles. That was in mile micro four, but overall, it's about that long. So you're doing different obstacles you're having to run through. Helping other people, that's a big part of it. And I thought this was kinda neat, too, with the yellow rocks painted to kinda symbolize the Yellow Brick Road. But, everybody was a team and tried to get everybody through it. You'll see up there, there's the Yellow Brick. That one's signed by President Trump. And this is me and my roommate. Got to be very close with him. When you're 11 weeks in a dorm room with someone, you actually get to know them pretty good. And I was blessed to have a very good roommate. He's from Ohio. Up here, you'll see, I did a bike challenge. So it wasn't just the Yellow Brick was the challenge. I did a 270-mile bike challenge. I ended up doing 550 miles out of this. We rode everywhere we possibly could, on weekends or after we'd get out of class just to get away from the place. Did some kayaking stuff. I did a rowing challenge, ended up doing over 50 miles rowing, which you only need to do 34. And then I had personal trips that I got to do. So on the times that we were not in class or not in session, weekends especially, my goal was just to get away from the academy and go have fun. And New York was one of the trips I took, which was an amazing trip. We got to go do a lot of things behind the scenes that most people never get to see. Some of the boats, we had first-class trips. There's the Fire Boat. I wanted to go on the Speed Boat, so I went on the New York Police Department boat. It was a little faster than the other one. That was a little slow up top. Special demonstrations from their helicopter units, water rescue. I mean, they just went all first-class on showing us what they have and the toys they had. You'll see up on the, one up there is a lot of people in the room. That's where you'll see, nothing compared to like ours, but there's cameras all over that place, and people from really just every federal government and every entity you can imagine is in that room if something major happens. 9/11 was, September 11th was one of those. This is inside the Freedom Tower. We got to go to the 102nd floor. There's an empty spot up there, so we got to kinda see from a bigger distance. And then very far back is the Statue of Liberty. It's kinda hard to tell, but it just shows you how far up you are. Got to see some other stuff that you'll never forget. We'll skip that. And of course, my favorite was seeing the Statue of Liberty. And this right here is the front engine of a fire ladder truck. So it shows you how bad, a lot of stuff was damaged during the attacks that day. Got to go to the Capitol Building. That was neat. I got a lot of the behind-the-scenes tours. We had somebody that was in our class that was a, that was a Capitol Police Officer, so she snuck us in a couple areas that most people don't get to go see. I was there luckily, or blessed during the part where it was green on the leaves, and all of a sudden then there was snow. So there was a lot of changes of the seasons, especially the White House. Beautiful during Christmas. It was amazing. Very beautifully done, decorations and stuff. I heard some people complain it wasn't that nice. It was beautiful. Just, if you can get up there during that time, it was amazing. And again, a view from the Capitol Building. This is the president's room, so where he goes to the Capitol when he's looking, this is the room he would be standing on the balcony if he was to go out there. Pentagon, my roommate, when I was in the Air Force, and his wife worked for the Pentagon, so I was able to get a kind of a sneak behind the tours of that as well. And as well as the Law Enforcement Memorial, we had to go and do a presentation during that. And then if you ever get a chance, I recommend this as well. This is the memorial they have for the Pentagon. I always try to go at night to each and every location I went to, because it's much beautiful at night, I thought. But pictures show you a lot different when you see these. And of course, one of my favorite was Arlington. This is a gravesite of a guy that I was stationed with here at McConnell. Didn't even know he was buried there until his wife contacted me, and so I had to go see what, his gravesite and stuff. And it snowed a couple of times where they're not bad, but enough to see how beautiful it was when it does snow in that area. Met a lot of people, a lot of friends, and that's the biggest part of the network as well. I have 222 people that, all I need to do is pick up a phone call, email. That's the amazing part. People are calling me nonstop right now, because they know we're Kalia. So I'm always getting people asking, do you have a policy on something? And right now, we're sharing that, so hopefully in the near future, we're gonna be asking them, hey, now I need a policy. We're getting ready to do license plate readers, so I'm gonna need a policy. What's the best practice out there? So, instead of trying to make something up, I'm gonna go with what somebody else might have. And of course, the most rewarding part is having, it was kinda neat having a president there. President has not been to the National Academy in 46 years, so I thought that was kinda neat. And of course, he has the Twitter and everything else, so there's, that's head up there. And of course, having my wife and the chief there was a pretty amazing experience. At that moment's when he actually promoted me, right then and there. So that was kinda neat as well. And this is my roommate and his wife. Again, the lifelong memories are lifelong. Things you have with these is amazing that you're able to have those experiences. Now, I did have one, I thought I had it on here, which would have been perfect timing, but as I was riding my bike one day, we're in the middle of Prince William Henry Forest, and this lady stops and her husband and family, and I'm kinda just starting to talk, 'cause I'll meet anybody, and it comes to find out it was her stepdaughter. I can't remember her name, but, with bicycle exchange.
Really?
I met her stepdaughter in the middle of Virginia, in the middle of a forest. Yes. Yes. So it's just kinda funny. It's, it is a small world out there. Does anyone have any questions? I know I kinda went through a little fast, because again, I don't want to take the whole hour that I was given, so. But I do, I thank you. The opportunity was amazing. It's definitely worth every second of every time I was there. It was very educational. So, on behalf of the chief and myself, it was just a blessing to be able to do that, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor. Buck, I would just say that all the slides and pictures I've seen from people's trips, this was one of the best. I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number 10, which is the consent agenda. It's items 10.1 through 10.13.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items 10.1 through 10.13 as presented.
Second. All right, motion by C.R., second by Greg, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. We have a temporary use permit application
Mr. Smalling is before you again this year to renew his temporary use permit to operate the farmer's market at the Plaza Shopping Center. He can answer any questions on dates, times, specific vendors.
Evening.
Good evening, Howard.
So it was successful last year, was it?
It was not as, as well as it was last year, the year I started, but it's a new market, and we're gonna have our ups and downs, so hoping this year will be.
You wanna go for it again, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'm reading this as, let's see, at 620 North Andover Road, that's another plaza, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. from April 1st through October 31st? Is this every day?
Right now, it's just gonna be on Thursdays, but we have other vendors who may also do it on Sunday or Saturday. So we just leave it open. But the main market will be Thursdays.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the temporary use permit application for 620 North Andover Road on the terms and dates as presented.
Second. All right, motion by C.R., second by Mike, to approve the temporary use as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Let's move on to item 12, which is the Red Bud Trail, 159th Street East to 13th Street North. Evening, Mr. Anderson.
Steve Anderson again, city engineer, thank you. This is bordering on very old business. This pertains to the Red Bud Trail that's already been constructed through town, the concrete path from 159th to the sports park. The design and construction occurred in years 2013 and 14, and along with that K-DOP process, we performed an environmental remed- And along with that K-DOP process, we performed an environmental remediation process called the Voluntary Cleanup Program. And essentially, this meant that the construction of the path was the remediation. It did allow us to transport some contaminated material and dispose of it on-site, which probably saved a few hundred thousand dollars. So the program was, uh, very well, uh, worth doing. But it's, it's another, if you will, a frustrating set of regulations. So now we're at the end of the closing out of the Voluntary Cleanup Program. There are two components to do that. One of those is new. It's called the Risk Management Program. And, um, what we're here for tonight is to ask for approval to apply for the Risk Management Program. We've, uh, already applied for the Environmental Use Control Agreement. And so upon completion of this application, KDHE will prepare a couple of agreements. We'll come back, uh, run those through legal review with Mr. Klaus and present those agreements to you sometime in the next few weeks or months. I think that's all I have unless you have questions.
Ms. Mayor. I, uh, move to approve the Risk Management Program application for the Red Bud Trail and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Troy, to approve the application as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to, uh, item number 13, Prairie Creek Phase 3. Back to this.
Okay. We're revisiting, uh, an item on last, uh, council meeting agenda, the paving bids for Prairie Creek Third Phase. This is the single-family addition, uh, east of the present single-family homes at Prairie Creek Road and 13th Street North. So we've opened the bids. We have a bid bond which holds them for practically 45 days, uh, based on some concerns expressed about a related project, paving of 13th Street North. This was deferred until this meeting. Uh, we have made some steps or confirmed some things. In the meantime, we have the developer, Mr. Kelsey here. Uh, his consultant, Phil Meyer with Baughman Company. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to you on whether you want to go ahead and discuss the bids or if you would like to, uh, open some discussion on 13th Street.
Well, you're, you're exactly correct. We deferred on the internal improvements in this to hopefully, um, hopefully gain a better understanding of where we were on 13th Street. I know that's been a subject of, uh, serious discussion, but, uh, no little action. And, um, that was the main reason for it. So, uh, with everybody's blessings, I would like to, to know exactly where we, where we're at on 13th Street today.
Uh, the two that I, two things I can report and I'll defer to Mark, I guess beyond that. We mentioned the need for some right-of-way acquisition, uh, last meeting as part of the delay in that. And we've received, I think we would say, a resounding no to that request. Uh, furthermore, our developer and their consultant have worked to seek to obtain a signature, uh, on a petition in hopes of gaining a 100% petition that would pass all legal muster. And I think the, uh, answer was resounding no on that. So those are the two steps we've taken. And so if we still need to formulate a strategy, strategy to move forward, I'll leave it up to Mark or others to add to that.
Does staff have, um... Well, I'll ask you if you have anything to add to that. And number two, um, it sounds like, um, sounds like, it sounds like it sounded nine years ago when you went through portion of the, the road that's already there, actually, is what it sounded like. So a little uncooperation from, from the neighbors who don't want to get assessed, right?
Mr. Mayor, without going into a lot of discussion, I think now that we know that, you know, we're not gonna have 100% petition, the important thing is going to be to sit down with staff and discuss alternatives we can, uh, put in front of the council. And I, I still think the improvement needs to be done, but we need, we need to look at our options on how we can achieve that and come back with some, some better alternatives. I think everybody was hoping that we could get a 100% petition. That would be simple. And, uh, the council would have an easy decision to go forth, uh, authorizing, uh, the project. But at this point, we don't have that. So I think we need to come back with, uh, two or three recommendations based on the fact that we know we're not gonna get 100% recommendation. I mean, I don't think there's a lot of things. There's only how we can possibly divide up an assessment that would be fair and equitable to everybody involved, um, and get this project done. But, uh, you know.
Those, that process is gonna require another public hearing and, uh, a lot of legal wrangling. Where are the petitions at right now? We received a set, right? Of petitions?
We received, we received a petition that, as has been pointed out before, didn't have 100% signatures, so.
Ruled that JT is invalid, improper, but...
Well, the petition was in the wrong form under any circumstances. It was improperly prepared. It said it was signed by 100% of the property owners and it wasn't. So it's not a valid petition you can accept.
Okay.
I, I also don't think it was ever reviewed by our office before it was submitted.
So before, before we go to rewrite petitions, we need to figure out what the plan is. Who's potentially going to pay for what?
We could discuss that, but again, I just want to make it clear that we're not, it does not appear we're going to get any cooperation from the owner, uh, on 13th Street. Which, like you said, nine years ago, you faced some of the same thing and, um, you know, there were solutions. There were solutions then.
Yes, I remember then. And we are, um, looking up some of those, um, old cases and see who is assessed and by what, what means and what methods. And trying to come up with something, something equitable. There is a new landowner, obviously, across the, uh, the street from this, has recently purchased, uh, that we do need right-of-way from. And, um, the question is coming down to fairness of what this property owner should be assessed as opposed to what Mr. Kelsey's development is already taking on, so. Well, they are inter, in my mind, they're interdependent, but, uh, I suppose we can separate, I mean, they're not technically, but, uh, I just, uh, I just want to make sure we're moving towards some action on what's gonna happen there. Uh, we've been talking about it for six months and, um...
To the developer's credit, they did go to the landowner who we asked them to go to and got an answer that I think we were all expecting we would get. Um, but.
Today.
Yeah, we, we asked them to go do it.
Today.
Right.
We've been talking about it for six months, so, um... Let's, uh, let's see what we want to do on the paving bids for Prairie Creek Phase 3. And then, uh, I guess my take on it would be instruct staff to get with the developer and legal counsel to figure out what this council's options are as to, um, these assessments or the improvements to 13th Street. And see if we can work out an agreement. I mean, something has to be done. Sounds like the city's gonna participate a little bit again. We know the developer's already participating. Uh, and then we gotta see what's fair and right, uh, for other parties involved. Fair enough? And how much time do you need for that?
Well, I'd like 30 days before we, uh, come back again to come up with a plan to present to you, I guess.
Bet we give you 60, so everybody's on board.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's go back to Prairie Creek Phase 3. You presented this last meeting, which we deferred. Uh, you have a low bid. Is that correct?
Yes, the bid tab is in your packets. The low bid was from APEC Kansas, Inc. Uh, they've done a number of jobs for us here in Andover. Their low bid was $404,498.25. Uh, if you choose to accept that, the motion is written out in, uh, under recommended action.
Questions, counsel?
I guess I have a question. I, I think you all have covered the issues fine. And unless the developer or his representative have some other statement, I think we'll proceed as now is undertaken. I, we're gonna have to have some time on the paving. It looks like another 60 days. Is that fair and reasonable from your standpoint?
That's for 13th Street.
I'm sorry, on 13th Street? Okay. So I, I hear that that proposal by Mark Deter seems to be fair and reasonable. And then on that basis, that we can proceed on the, on the paving applications. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess the question would be approving this tonight, approves us to go ahead and, and put in the road.
These are internal improvements. Not, this has nothing to do with 13th Street.
Got to figure out how we're gonna pay for 13th Street. But he needs to get going on this, uh, you know, to, we've got other improvements we've done. And I think essentially, the developers asked what we've done to this point.
Okay. That makes more sense to me now.
And the lots that are being affected by this are what, 47 lots?
This one is just gonna be 100, this paving project will be 100% paid for by these 47 lots. The, the other one, uh, will be affected too. But if we could just deal with this, what we've got in front of us tonight, then if we could get the 60 days to deal with the rest, that would be great.
Evening, Phil.
Good evening, Phil Meyer of Baughman Company. I just want to point out, and I, I think it's clear to everybody, but we're looking to solve this 13th Street paving petition before we start selling any of these 35 lots. So that's why 30 days is fine. Um, we need to keep this process rolling because once we start selling some of those lots, then we're losing lots to have an opportunity to assess. Or we're asking council to assess lots that we've sold. We don't want to be in either one of those two situations.
You're not only looking to assess these 47 lots, but some unplatted territory as well?
Yes.
Well, counsel, what you have before you tonight is, is the paving bids on Prairie Creek Phase 3. Uh, we need a motion to...
So moved.
To approve.
As presented.
Okay. Sure, a second.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by CR, to accept the low bid in amount not to exceed $404,498.25 from APEC Kansas. And authorize the mayor to sign the contract concerning the paving bids for Prairie Creek Phase 3 as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item 14. Uh, what you have before you tonight is an RFQ for Architectural Services. Roosevelt, are you presenting this or...
Uh, I have some details to present. Uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel, thank you again for the opportunity to come before you with, with this. Um, as most of you know, uh, your fire department has a long history of, of excellence and things. The, uh, the current facility that we're in was identified as part of the, um, survey package that we did, um, about, uh, eight months ago as an area of, that could have some improvement. Uh, what we're asking that you authorize us to do is to put out a request for qualifications. This will enable us to interview, if you will, the various architectural designers that can assist us in maximizing the use and availability of the space that we currently have and make any recommendations that we may be able, of how best to expand or build upon the facility that you already have at your disposal. Uh, most of you know, the facility was put up approximately 24 years ago. At that point in time, we had two full-time personnel that only worked during the day, Monday through Friday. Um, now your staff, uh, is five firefighters every day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, plus four support staff, uh, during the day, every day during the week. And the facility was just not designed to house that many people in addition to the EMS staffing. Um, the diagram above kind of shows the breakdown, if you will, of the areas utilized by Butler County EMS, which is encircled in the yellow highlight. The area of red highlight is the remodel that was done, um, in anticipation of receiving the new ladder truck because it just would not fit in the building. And then the remainder, uh, of the space is, the unhighlighted space is dedicated fire department space and the blue space is shared space between Butler County EMS and, uh, your fire staff. And simply, the, uh, RFQ will enable us to make sure that the architects that we give the request for proposals to have the necessary, um, brain power, if you will, to be able to come up with a, a best-practice solution, um, for your staff to be able to function well into the future out of this facility. Uh, be happy to answer any questions that I can or defer to Mr. Deter if I've spoken arreably.
I think we're just essentially looking for some qualified architects.
Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, move to authorize the fire department to issue an RFQ for engagement of Architectural Services for the Fire Station 1 and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline, to approve the RFQ as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I like the Fire Station 1, insinuating that there's a 2. It's just...
Thank you very much, Mayor and Kelsey.
It's a $4 million 2, uh, that hasn't been approved yet. Uh, we'll go on to, uh, item...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that was part of that motion.
Yeah.
We'll go on to item 15. Um, Jen, you want to handle this?
Sure. I've got a couple of different committee items coming up here. So this first one, it might've been confusing with so many, um, changes to committees and appointments. But this one is a revision of the CVB resolution that states who serves on your Convention and Visitors Bureau over time. And I, I think this isn't atypical. Practice doesn't always match what's in writing. And so this was a cleanup to make sure that the people that are voting as a Convention and Visitors Bureau match what your authorizing resolution state should. Um, so some things to point out. We are clearly stating each hotel should be represented instead of a hotel year. Um, it doesn't really seem fair or reasonable at the current time, you have two, to have one hotel represented and not the other. So each hotel should have a representative. Um, and it does, um, clearly explain that the formerly-known council liaison is now a member of the CVB and as such, should vote in all CVB matters. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I, just clarification on, was the at-large person or is that later on? I mean, there was somebody...
There's now no longer an at-large. That's where it was kind of, that was kind of the catch-all, like, oh, they're an at-large. But over time, there were multiple at-larges and it was, so now we got rid of the at-large. There's two hotel years. And there's a, the chairperson of the chamber, a council member, the mayor. And then, um, I guess it is still technically one at-large, but that is, um, traditionally been held by the Kansas Medical Center.
Okay. I was just wondering if we knew, did that appointment could come from anywhere or are we kinda...
It can come from anywhere.
But, but at this point, that's where it is. And that's a good place.
And the explanation for that is, um, the CVB has been for many years now doing a hotel-hospital voucher program. That is, um, I would say besides the amphitheater, your most successful program. I mean, it's, it's a really neat program that retains, um, hospital guests and actually hos, or, uh, medical tourism is an industry. Um, and hospital guests to stay here in Andover opposed to just running up 21st Street over to Wichita.
And this is by no means affects, um, the decision-making authority on this board.
Absolutely.
All of, all of what the CVB does, they are all recommendations to this body anyways. But it, it does clean it up and I think it's about time, so.
I don't think it sounds good. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the resolution amending and restating Chapter 2, Section 3 of the City of Andover Policy and Guidelines Handbook regarding the Convention and Visitors Centers Bureau.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Troy, to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, the Andover Road Business Improvement Grant.
So switching gears to another committee, um, last year was our first year to do the Andover Road Business Improvement Grant. And through that program, you did award $5,000 to Andover Family Dentistry. The idea being, as your comp plan indicated to you, we would really like to help, um, businesses on Andover Road put the best foot forward for the whole community. And a way we could do this is through, um, matching up to $5,000 per recipient, up to three recipients per year, um, through this grant. So tonight, we are looking for, um, appointments to serve on that committee. Like last year, we asked the chamber for recommendations. And thank you, Becky Wolf, for giving us a couple. Um, you've got in your motion, the two names from the chamber, which is Stephanie Skaggs and Kathy Walter. And then, um, the mayor has a couple additional appointments from the council, um, Councilman Schneider and Councilman Warrington.
That was, those were suggestions? That was, those were suggestions, if you'd be so oiling.
That's fine.
I know how suggestions work.
I want to hear, I want to hear some speeches. I accept.
So we need a motion to approve the appointments.
Yes, sir.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline to approve the mayor appointments to the committee for Concerning Andover Road Business Improvement Grants. Further discussion. Have we had any, anyone submit anything yet?
I haven't received an application yet, but I will say I've talked to three businesses so far, which is three more businesses than I talked to at this point a year ago. So I think that we've sparked some interest. We sent a postcard out with last year's winner. So I think maybe then people started to think, well, it's not that hard.
It's for real.
That was some of the feedback, that the idea of a grant sounds difficult, cumbersome. And actually, our award winner gave a quote that we put on that postcard that basically said it was a very simple process.
And I would say that, I served on that committee last year and I don't think we ever even had to meet. We did it all by email, so it won't be anything, that won't be taxing.
Well, they're going to have to have email.
Okay, did we vote on that?
No.
No.
Motion and second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item seventeen, Central Park Facilities.
This is the last committee I'll talk to you about tonight, I do believe. Per direction from our, I believe, last workshop, maybe last two workshops, we've talked about a need to make the decision-making process a little bit more efficient in terms of specifically making offers to artists for the amphitheater. But then there have been a few other things that have just come up that time-wise, the two-week cycle isn't working especially well. And so before you tonight is our resolution of an amphitheater committee. That would include the mayor, a city council member, and then four city staff members that would be able to make some decisions in a little bit quicker turnaround time so that we can not lose artists and things like that.
So this is specifically the resolution creating this committee?
Yes, and then the next item is where you appoint the person, so I don't know if...
You want us to combine those, or should I do two separate?
No, let's pass the resolution separately, if you would.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt a resolution creating the Amphitheater Committee.
Second.
Who did that? Greg? Motion by Caroline, second by Greg to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seventeen point two is obviously the appointments. Are we going to make these annual then, I suppose?
I figured you would do it as part of your annual appointments going forward.
You'll need to add to your annual.
Do you want to do this as titles or as names?
I would, well, I would probably do the, the city staff as titles and the mayor and the city council person. I have, I have nominated Brian Chwan to serve on the committee this year, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the appointment to the committee as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline to approve the appointments to the Amphitheater Committee as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen point three, Wi-Fi in Central Park.
Facility use policy. We squeezed in there earlier today, but it's...
Oh, really?
But it was at our last workshop, so.
Seventeen point three.
I'm sorry, this isn't matching their packets.
Oh.
And I don't know why, because I printed these out. I inserted in the packet seventeen point three with the updated facility.
Okay.
Seventeen four is your Wi-Fi, so it doesn't matter to me.
That's fine. I, I go old school. So we'll go to seventeen point three.
All right, Katie Cork, Event Director. Before you today is the updated Central Park Facility Use Policy. That includes now the new patio that was built and the new amphitheater. We have had it reviewed by our city attorney and as Jenny talked about, we talked about it at our last workshop. And so this is the official policy to approve. It includes the new pricing structure.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the updated Central Park Facilities Use Policy as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline to approve the use policy as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Craig, now you're up. Back to Wi-Fi in Central Park.
Yes. I got some homework at the workshop and I'd like to review kind of what we have come up with here. I'll try and keep it out of the weeds, but there is a lot of information. Basically, we went back and looked at what turned out to be nine options for how we could try to provide some Wi-Fi in Central Park. The focus was to get it back to a two-year term so that we could keep it short enough that we could be responsive to changes over time. We eliminated one option because of cost. We eliminated a couple options because they did not actually satisfy the coverage requirements and then, excuse me, Cox came back with what I'm calling the tuned proposals that actually focused in on service around the amphitheater. So that narrowed it down to three options and that's kind of what I'm going to focus on, the selection process there. They have the ability to support the entire area. They've got a varying amount of patrons that they will support on this and then we've got some cost considerations. Obviously, the cheapest cost covered the least people and on that way. Kind of pulled these in here as ranking them so that we could see what it was. And you can see that if we ranked against users and cost and coverage, they came out this way. And so we picked the highest three options to finish consideration. And that kind of pulled in like this. Now, I would like to recommend that we go with what I'm calling the Cox Tuned Number One. What we ended up with was the Cox Tuned Number Two didn't have as many, the ability to cover as many people as the other two options did. And the Pixieus Standard Option was the more expensive of the two that had the, the good coverage. And looking at it, basically what we're talking about is, sorry. Lot, there it is. The Pixieus Standard and the Cox Tuned One have a cost of roughly eighty dollars, eighty, eighty to eighty-five dollars a patron for the coverage, where the Cox Tuned Two, even though it's cheaper overall, it has such a reduced coverage that it runs about a hundred and forty-four dollars per person that it covers. So in balance, I, what I'd like to recommend is that we go forward with that Cox Tuned Option Number Two, or Cox Tuned Number One, the middle option there in the bottom.
Okay, so if I, if I'm, oh, you go ahead. I was going to say...
That's a little different than I, I believe we discussed last week, is it?
And that's where we ended up with last week. This is a little bit...
Cox Tuned Number One? Okay, go ahead.
Met today as well, and we actually went through the whole thing with all the different items and technicality of things and, and Craig walked through everything and came, came to the same conclusion. So, long story short, the two best options are about the same price. Something that Craig didn't bring up today was, or tonight, was that the Cox setup allows more flexibility for him to be able to add new access points quickly and to manage the overall product, whereas the Pixieus does not. And so if we look at them as pretty equal and then you take into account flexibility of, of current service as well as future upgrades, I think it's, to me, it was a no-brainer, which is also why I, I would have recommended the one that he's recommending too.
I have a question. We had discussed the cost of initial installment and, and materials and does the price, like this is two years and is this including all that equipment kind of stuff? And will the price get better in future years, or, or do they don't have any charge at all for equipment? It's theirs and they just put it in and...
Basically, the vendor needs to be able to recoup the cost of the equipment during the life of the agreement. And in this case, a two-year agreement drove the price up somewhat. We did look at some longer terms, but we were asked to focus in on the two-year agreements here.
Right, I understand, because we did say that. But then do you suppose that if we get down at two years and, okay, we're happy with it, then if you do an extension or something, that the prices could be lower because again, the initial installation? Or is this always...
It could be higher.
You think it'd get higher, okay.
Could be.
I think it would get lower.
Well, if we've paid off the equipment and they leave it in place and we get another agreement, I'm sure we've got some negotiation room in all of that. The thing that we focused on was that in two years, we're going to be able to figure out what we're going to do as an amphitheater, how well it's performing, how well we are able to adapt to this, and we'll really know at the end of that time what we need.
Well, I agree. I think we all felt that way, even though the two years might be a little more expensive than opposed to having done five, but it gives us that opportunity to grow and learn about it. Okay, one last question. Is the only coverage area from this going to be like the road that cuts across and, and then to the south? Because I'm thinking the Dog Park and that other area probably would not pick up the Wi-Fi coverage.
The Dog Park is not necessarily included in this, but as part of that flexibility we talked about, we could easily add on specific points like that if we decide that we'd like to expand the coverage at some point in the time. The focus on this is getting the service to the amphitheater so that event staff and patrons at the amphitheater events will have the ability to get on the Wi-Fi and...
No, I understand. Just from looking at the picture, I'm trying to figure out how far the coverage would really go. So you're saying it would get up to the gazebo at least and...
The gazebo and basically it's from central down to the, the road behind the dam. I know it's got a name, I can never remember.
I, I don't know what to call it, either dirt road back there, but okay, well, very good. I, that was what I was wondering about.
The Dam Road. That's the Dam Road.
Yeah. And, and then again, it probably would not cross over Lake George at all, so it would just be...
It should cover basically out to the trail on the backside of Lake George. We have the desire to get out to the conference cabin and I've got to work with them to see how close we're getting to that because we'd like to add the ability to put that in so we can get it on the security system. But that's kind of an additional thing we're working on.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thanks to the fine work of Mr. Craig Brown and our fellow council member Troy Edel, I would move to engage Cox Communications by way, I guess, of Cox Tuned Number One to install the Wi-Fi in Central Park.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Troy to approve the Wi-Fi in Central Park. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
That's one for eight.
By the way, Jennifer, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I ever received that number from the Cox representative.
The phone number.
That I asked for?
Yes, I will get that to you.
Yes, thank you. Move on to eighteen, Capitol Federal Amphitheater. You doing this?
That's me. As Katie and I worked on not only sponsorships, but the furniture for the Lodge Patio, an opportunity came up with Treescapes to discount the Lodge Patio Furniture down with a sponsorship for the VIP experience. We think we came up with a win-win deal where we would discount the furniture twenty-four thousand dollars for a two-year VIP experience sponsorship.
Was that on the list of sponsorships?
You're proud of yourself?
We're out of the box.
Out of the box?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. Have you ordered the furniture?
Officially, no.
That's on your PBC meeting here in a second, Mr. Mayor.
It's arrived.
Mr. Mayor, that's on your PBC agenda here directly.
I got it, yeah, okay. So, are you running all the sponsorship agreements through the city council?
No, this one, I don't know. We presented this one, but no, I do not intend to bring you all sponsors. I think that you would get tired of us if we brought you all sponsors.
You'll notice that there's also an agenda item...
We, we want to hear about them, but...
Back on the, on the CVB about the purchase of the furniture, we're using this discount.
Yeah, okay. Do you want us to approve this agreement?
You were interested in making a motion on this.
Do you think I was?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Capitol Federal Amphitheater VIP Experience Sponsorship Agreement with Treescapes Outdoor Living Center for 2018 and 2019 seasons in exchange for a twenty-four thousand dollar discount on the Central Park Lodge Patio Furniture.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Motion by Greg, second by CR to approve the experience sponsorship as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen is the executive, what?
No, yeah, Public Building Commissioner.
Yeah, okay. I need a motion to recess the Andover City Council meeting and convene the Public Building Commission.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Mike to recess the Andover City Council meeting and convene the Public Building Commission. Further, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Floor is yours, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I shall call a meeting to order. Roll call on my far left.
Caroline Hale, Building, Public Building Commissioner.
Troy Tabor, Commissioner.
Ben Lawrence, Commissioner.
Clark C.R. Nelson, President.
Greg Schneider, Commissioner.
Mike Warrington, Commissioner.
Item three are the minutes of the Public Building Commission meeting on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
We've got a motion by Troy and a second by Mike to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, the Central Park Lodge Patio Furniture Purchase. Lester, why don't you tell us a little bit about this?
We're seeking your approval to order that furniture referenced in the previous VIP Experience Agreement. We provided you with a little bit of, of information on the furniture. It is, for one thing, very heavy-duty. It's solid cast aluminum versus the hollow that you typically see. We included some pictures there. One thing that is unusual about this furniture is we were able to custom order it with all of the bases being the heavy cast bases rather than legs on all the tables, which are the most common failure point. So we, we feel this is a very good alternative. It's aluminum, but yet it's solid aluminum and should be very heavy-duty and withstand use.
Do you consider this to be as good of a purchase as you did during the city council meeting earlier?
This is a better purchase.
Even a better deal?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a question. Did you also do some investigation of vendors and prices out there to...
We did.
Sometimes somebody can say, you're getting, but, yeah, I'm just curious.
And what we found was... And what we found was this is one of the only companies out there that does solid aluminum versus the hollow cast aluminum. The other comparables were the same price, but not nearly as heavy-duty. And then the fact that we could take that price and discount it down by $24,000 with the sponsorship...
Absolutely.
...sealed the deal.
If we have no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the purchase of patio furniture for the Central Park Lodge Patio from Treescapes Outdoor Living Center at a cost of $64,385 minus $24,000 of VIP Experience sponsorship for 2018 and 2019 for a total expenditure of $40,385.
So we have a motion by Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second by Troy, is that correct?
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I just thought of one more question. Do we have any idea of life expectancy? Do they have some kind of a warranty on this furniture? I'm looking at and I'm seeing cushion kind of things, and I'm just knowing how badly the sun beats that stuff up. So I'm wondering.
We did talk about that. I believe the commercial warranty was a year. The one thing that we are able to do that most people aren't is we will only have a portion of the furniture out on the patio at a time so we can rotate back and forth to minimize the sun exposure. We can also put it all away for the winter to get it in out of the sun.
Because even the cushion kind of things, unless you have somebody renting an event and if it's just sitting there throughout the burning sun week, I'm thinking you don't have to leave the cushions on it. I just know that that's what will get absolutely destroyed quickly, the sun just...
These don't have cushions.
Oh, okay, so the picture...
They're a woven pattern seat.
Okay.
So a cushion isn't required. However, if you wanted to add a cushion, you could in the future.
Bring your, okay, so I'm looking at our picture. It showed cushions, so you're saying they don't exist. So, okay, great, then that will do nicely. But I was just thinking cushions are gonna...
I have some of this furniture, and I have the cushions, and I've had it ten years. It's just fine.
Really? And you leave it sitting out in the sun?
I put it up for winter. I did it this winter, but it's still fine. I just, matter of fact, I power wash it in the spring and they're handy-dandy. It's umbrella fabric.
Well, that's great.
Excellent question. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will hereby adjourn the building commission meeting and return to city council, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's reconvene the undercity council meeting. Did you need a motion to adjourn that, there, Chief?
We usually did, but do we have to?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the Public Building Commission and reconvene the undercity council meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It shall be adjourned.
All right. You have to tell me what item we're on now. I guess my sheet's all wacky.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one.
Point one.
Which is?
Executive Session.
Session, all right.
Got next.
So, somebody be so kind as to call Executive Session for consultation with our attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship.
Do we need to make sure to invite Mr. Casey into, or can he just be covered under our attorney?
How many people do you, who do you want in this and for how long?
City Attorney, myself.
We want the mayor, the city administrator, the city attorney, and Derek Casey with Triple Wolf Garrettson, as well as the Director of Public Works.
That's fine.
So moved for twenty minutes.
Okay.
Isn't that what you recommended?
Do we say fifteen or twenty?
I think fifteen will be sufficient to reconvene shortly after eight-thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Troy and a second by Caroline to go into Executive Session to include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, special counsel Derek... I'm sorry, what was your last name? Casey. Derek Casey for approximately fifteen minutes for consultation, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and also to discuss potential litigation pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four thirty-one nine subsection B, Article Two, as suggested. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, no, maybe, there you go. Counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Mike to come out of executive session. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are we down to member items?
Receive and file reports in minutes and that's when you're gonna do anything. I felt like your, Mr. Mayor, can I say, the state of the city that you put in here, while rather lengthy, is pretty amazing and I wish that maybe in a future meeting or somehow the citizens heard it to see what all has been accomplished. It's a great deal by everybody.
You know, I've done that before, but you will also find it on the city's website. And then did you do a Twitter feed about that or Facebook?
I know Jassy's planning on it. I don't believe I've seen it come across yet, so I will get with her tomorrow and make sure that we get that out there on both Facebook and Twitter.
And we're gonna run it on Channel 7, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
So it'll be out there a little bit, rather than sit in here and read it verbatim to the camera.
It's pretty long, but it's great.
It is.
Perfect.
Member items? Is that where we're at? Okay. Caroline, you want to start us off?
Yes, I earlier this evening, we heard a presentation from Captain Buchanan about his experience, but I really would like to take the opportunity to say that this was quite an honor and that you were chosen for this and we're really proud to have you on the force and I think that it will bring back, it will really help in the operations that we have for you to have made these connections and that you've gained those experiences. So, thank you.
Thank you, and it was an honor. Thank you very much.
Okay. And just to tag one thing onto that, I hope that there's additional training that you can provide to our police department that would be part of this to, you know, transfer some of the new knowledge that you have.
And there is a part of that is the, like, we're doing active threat. Some of the training, there's more things I learned up there and we are planning another drill this year, so it's just a matter of getting the date set and everything else. So, oh yeah, training's ongoing with us. Every year we have at least minimum 40, but we average over 100 hours, but it's, part of this is gonna help with that as well.
Wonderful. Okay. Two quick things. One is being the liaison to the League of Kansas Municipalities. They reached out and asked for members of the league to be mentors to other newer council members and commissioners in other places, and they asked me to be a mentor for Matthew Guthrie in El Dorado, who's a new commissioner, their commissioner's over there. So I actually went to El Dorado commission meeting and sat through it. It's quite a bit different than what we do, but it was really interesting, learned a lot. And then we met for lunch and kind of chatted about, you know, why we got into the seats that we're in and what kind of things we focused on. It was really nice. And then the second thing would be with the Andover Chamber. We had one ribbon cutting already for Melissa Kelly Imagery and that was really neat. She has a location in Wichita, started to open a location here in Andover, which is her primary location now and it's behind Intrust Bank. It's pretty neat to see that. And then there is an upcoming ribbon cutting and it would be great to see a lot more of our faces there. And that's coming on the 16th. It's for Firestone and the Bigfoot Monster Truck from when I was a kid will be there, apparently. So that'd be kind of interesting. And that's all.
Council President Nelson is the featured speaker at that. We've got a huge speech planned for him.
We've got 45 minutes. Over, back, and down.
Are you gonna be in the truck when you give the speech? Very good.
You're up.
I share the accolades. I'm very proud to have you onboard and all of your great efforts. Nothing further?
Great.
I want to thank you also for your, what you do. Thank you. That's all.
Mike? I'll ditto all of them and nothing else. Staff, have anything? You sure? Last chance.
I want to say something. I just want to make sure you saw the great signage. It looks really good. It was installed today on the amphitheater, both the monument interview sign and over the top of the amphitheater, so it just makes it feel that much more finished and polished. Check it out with your headlights on the way out.
You sure? Okay. It's a long month. We're gonna be like three more weeks before we meet again. Right?
Move to adjourn.
Is it 27?
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
All right, sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Sierra and a second by Troy. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.